Well, good evening. Thank you for coming tonight. It is May the 9th. It's our regular meeting at 5 o'clock. Let's go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the Kids That Hope pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success. No exceptions. Please be seated. Board members, at this time, we can go ahead. I'll sit down. Mr. Superintendent, I'll turn it over to you. And board members, we can go ahead and head on to the floor.
Okay, I'll bring up Ms. Lydia Martin for Special Orders of Business.
Good evening, Chairman Inglesall, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. At this time, I would like to invite Dr. Kevin Perry to the podium for a special recognition from the Boys and Girls Clubs of St. Lucy County.
Chairman Inglesall, School Board Member, Superintendent Prince. Eight years ago, I had the wonderful privilege of representing, at that time Superintendent Gent, at a conference for partners with the Boys and Girls Club. At that time, I met the newly-minted CEO, Will Armstead. It was during one of our breakout sessions that this moment of epiphany happened, and we looked at each other and said, "But your kids are my kids, and my kids are your kids. They're the same kids." Thus, set the foundation for increasing the partnership between St. Lucy Public Schools and the Boys and Girls Club. Currently, we are represented -- they are represented in seventeen of our schools, two high schools, and eight standalone sites, serving some 4,000-plus students each and every day. One of those students that we serve is the wonderful Mia Morrison, who has been named the Florida Youth of the Year for the Boys and Girls Club for the second consecutive year. It is my esteemed honor and privilege to introduce Will Armstead, CEO, and Mia Morrison at this time.
Thank you so much for that, Dr. Perry, who is also a board member, who works me really hard. I do, before I go into Mia Morrison, I do want to thank the school district for the love that you showed us when we lost one of our dear club directors at Morningside. I had a quick conversation with Dr. Prince, and by Monday morning, there was a flood of social workers, guidance counselors, and teachers around the campus to make sure that our staff and the kids were doing well. I also want to especially thank the principal, Heather Bolythio, and Assistant Principal Shannon Turner-Wright, who made it very clear that these were our kids, and that was our staff. So, thank you, thank you so much for that. What Dr. Perry talked about was our Youth of the Year program, which is our signature effort to foster a new generation of leaders, fully prepared to live and lead in a diverse global and integrated world economy. In the 21st century world and workplace, leadership skills such as communication, goal-setting, and teamwork are essential for everyone, especially young people preparing to meet the challenges of adolescence and adulthood. I am honored to present to you Mia Morrison, who is the two-time Florida Youth of the Year winner. And not only is she the winner, but it's never happened in the state of Florida. So, I'm very happy for that. And it couldn't be done without the school system and Boys and Girls Clubs working together. Mia Morrison.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so honored to be here to represent Boys and Girls Clubs of St. Lucy County, as well as all of you. All of you have personally touched my heart by what you give to our communities, what you give to our youth. And that's poured into me, and I feel so loved and supported. And I'm so glad that I get to represent all of you guys at Regionals in Atlanta, Georgia, next month. And I'm just so excited. Because as now, I'm a senior, and I'm about to go to college, to Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, to study aerospace engineering. And with the help of you all, especially Mr. Will, today I just found out that I received another $40,000 scholarship to make a total of $250,000 for Embry-Riddle. So, I am beyond blessed. I've only been in America for about ten years, and Fort Pierce for eight years. But to have made all of these supporting connections, all of you pouring your love and support into me, now I have a full ride to my dream school, and I thank all of you, and may God bless each of you. Thank you.
I do just want to take the opportunity that Boys and Girls Clubs have been in St. Lucy County for 30 years. And I do want to recognize Jack Kelly, who is one of the founding board members. Thank you, Jack, for all you do for us.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Deb Mock from the Kiwanis, and they have some special presentations to make as well tonight.
Good evening, Dr. Prince and School Board Members. It is my honor to represent Fort Pierce Sunrise Kiwanis tonight. We are a local civic organization, and we belong to Kiwanis International. I want to let the crowd tonight know that we are a global community of clubs that partner to improve the lives of children one community at a time. Today, we stand with more than 550,000 members from key clubs to Kiwanis. And we have ages in the club from -- we start in the -- some clubs are in the elementary school, and we go all the way into our high schools. We have four clubs here, key clubs, in St. Lucy County with over 400 members. We actually have the largest key club in the state of Florida, Fort Pierce Central. We know that each community has different needs, and Kiwanis empowers members to pursue ways to serve the needs of children. That is our goal. Tonight, we are going to give over $8,000 to schools in St. Lucy County for the projects that they did. You'll see them up on the display. These are displays at the fair. And we are so blessed that the schools partner with us to have the students create fairs at the -- displays at the fair. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Barry Keim, who is the president of Kiwanis. He's going to join the receiving line. And then I will begin calling up the schools to receive their checks. For first place, for elementary, we have Rivers Edge Elementary. They will receive $1,000. Second place is White City Elementary, and they will receive $500. Third place is Bay Shore Elementary, and they will receive $250,000. I wish. $250. If somebody in the crowd wants to make that donation, please see me. We're going to take pictures now. As they're taking pictures, if you could look up at the displays, the children are so creative in what they do. And special thanks to all the teachers who helped the children to create these wonderful displays. Our next awards are for the middle K-8 winners. First place, Palm Point K-8 School. $1,000. Second place, Alapata Flats K-8 School. $500. And third place, $250 to Forest Grove Middle. Our theme this year was Race to Success. And you can see in the pictures above that all schools took a different approach to it, and they were so creative in the way they did it. While they are taking a picture, I'd just like to note some of the special projects that Kiwanis does. We partner with Main Street to do the Sites and Sounds Parade each year that you see at Christmas. This year, we also built a new children's adaptive park at J.C. Park. We recently just had a golf tournament in all of the funds that we collect go towards children. Finally, the high school winners. Port St. Lucy High School, first place, $1,000. Second place, St. Lucy West Centennial High School. $500. And third place, Lincoln Park Academy, $250. While they are taking pictures, we also tonight brought checks for two local libraries at public schools. Fair Lawn received a check for $250. And F.K. Sweet. We also give awards for out-of-the-box winners. These are fair displays that don't quite adhere to the theme, but were outstanding in their presentation. We have Fair Lawn Elementary School that will receive $250. If they want to come up. And Westgate K-8. The next group that we would like to honor for Kiwanis Pick. This is a choice for the Kiwanis Club itself, and we chose Morningside Elementary School. They will receive $250. When we have finished giving out the checks, I'm going to let you know all of the sponsors for these checks. We could not do this without their help. They are vital in making sure that the students in St. Lucy County are recognized for all of their hard work. Our last big award is the People's Choice Award. This particular award is voted on by the students, parents, grandparents, anyone that walks through our building at the fair. They get to use a voting machine from the elections office, and they vote for their favorite. This year, the winner was St. Lucy West K-8, and they will receive $1,000. While they are getting ready to get their picture taken, I'd like for you to all look at the screen to see our major sponsors for these awards. Garber Buick GMC was the group that gave the $1,000 awards. Dermody Pediatric Dentistry gave the second-place awards. R.K. Davis gave the third-place awards. The St. Lucy County Fair themselves sponsored the out-of-box awards. OCI Consulting and Engineering are the ones who partner with Kiwanis so that we can choose who our favorite is. And finally, the supervisor election, St. Lucy County, sponsors the People's Choice you see right now. So, thank you to all our sponsors and to all of the students and the educators who helped to make this year's fair such a success. We thank all of you, and we hope to see you next year with a new theme. Thank you.
And the good news just doesn't end here in St. Lucy Public Schools. At this time, I'd like to invite Diane Johnson and Lavinia Morgan, chairperson of the Week of Kindness, along with the parade chairperson, to provide some recognition for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Awards.
Good evening, Chairman Inglesall, Board Members, and Dr. Prince. On behalf of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemorative Committee, we just want to present you, Dr. Prince, with this plaque. Because in the last hour, we were in need, and you did not hesitate. And we're just so grateful for you coming through and making it happen. And it reads, "Chairperson's Appreciation Award, presented to Dr. John Prince, Superintendent, St. Lucy Public Schools, with sincere gratitude and respect for your outstanding service and support to the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Committee." And May 9th, 2023, Dr. Prince. Just want to say thank you.
Good evening, Chair Inglesall, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. John Prince. First, I'd like to say that our parade entries are judged in five categories. The categories were appearance, originality, performance, participation, and the execution of the theme. Historically, those entries having floats received the highest scores because they had the greater opportunity to display their creativity in several of these categories. This year, eight schools are being recognized. Two high schools, three middle K-8s, and three elementary school. Our overall winner for this year is Fort Pierce Central High School. I'd like to say that the overall winner for the parade receives the highest scores from all of the participants in the entire parade. And the overall winner is Fort Pierce Central High School. Our high school winner is Port St. Lucy High School. Middle school and K-8. We have first place, Forest Grove Middle School. Second place, Dan McCarty Middle School. Third place, Oakhammock K-8. Elementary schools. We have first place, Savannah Ridge. Second place, Windmill Point. And third place, Francis K. Sweet Elementary. Okay, the Week of Kindness is an activity sponsored by the Treasure Coast Chapter of Charmets in collaboration with the Martin Luther King Commemorative Committee. It was originated over 20 years ago by Charmet Dolores Hans in an effort to involve our community in the promotion of some of the ideals of Dr. King. During this week, community leaders, schools, organizations, and churches are encouraged to carry out random acts of kindness in an effort to touch the lives of those in need in our communities. This year, we had five schools to participate. Participants submitted documentation consisting of pictures, logs of hours accumulated by their school communities. These hours consisted of kind deeds performed by individual students as well as schoolwide activities benefiting the school community and its shareholders. Local nursing homes and/or businesses and agencies such as Safe Space and Treasure Coast Food Bank. Our first place winner is Chestermore Elementary. Second place Lakewood Park Elementary. Third place Francis K. Sweet Elementary and Rivers Edge Elementary, as well as Savannah Ridge Elementary will be receiving certificates of participation. On behalf of the Martin Luther King Commemorative Committee, congratulations to all our schools being recognized tonight. Thank you for your continued support and participation.
At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Kevin Perry to the podium, who will share with you the winners of the annual Dr. Samuel S. Gaines Essay Contest.
Chairman Ingersoll, School Board Members, Superintendent Prince, the Dr. Samuel S. Gaines African American Essay Contest is named for a true educational pioneer who served the children of St. Lucy Public Schools for close to 40 years. As we know, writing is such an integral part of our educational process and this contest, which aligns with the instructional framework for writing, is another opportunity for our students to practice those skills. In addition, they will receive a nice monetary scholarship provided by Remnant Construction, which has been our premier sponsor for this essay contest since its inception. Representing Remnant tonight is our partner and friend, Brandon Noble. Please join me, Mr. Noble. And the winners are, in elementary school, the third place winner is Liliana Casadilla from West Gate K A, fifth grade student. Second place Jeremiah Joseph, fourth grade from Palmport. And our first place winner in elementary school is Leia Jones from West Gate K A. In middle school, third place goes to Andrew Massup from Southport Middle School. Second place Isabella Capo from St. Lucy West K A. And our middle school first place winner is Daniel Green, eighth grade from St. Lucy West K A. In high school, from Lincoln Park Academy, third place goes to Giselle Casneros. I should know that name because I've said it before for music, I know that. In second place, Garrett Ingleton from Lincoln Park Academy, tenth grade. And the first place high school winner is Taslim Akter from Lincoln Park Academy in the ninth grade. While we're setting up for our photo op, if we have any parents from these wonderful students in the audience, please stand and let us recognize you at this time as well. Thank you so much for your support of our educational process, parents. This is the photo op time, so if you need to move closer, parents, please don't hesitate to do so. Stay there, everybody, don't move, we still have a couple of parents taking photos. Mr. Noble is representing Remnant Construction and Brian Garcia, and at this time, we just want to present them with a certificate of appreciation as well for their support of this program since its inception. Thank you, Mr. Noble.
All right, congratulations to all of the winners. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Michelle Gillard, Coordinator of Mental Health, Psychological and Social Services, who will share information about Mental Health Awareness Month.
Chairman Ingersoll, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Prince, I first want to just thank all of you for supporting our mental health efforts in our schools. I know that it's making a difference in the lives of our students because of the hard work of our team members, so thank you. So I have here with me Jean Delugos, he's one of our school social workers, and Freya Odell, who's one of our students, who's going to read our mental health proclamation, mental health awareness proclamation.
Good afternoon, the School Board of St. Lucy County, my name is Freya Odell. This is the proclamation of Mental Health Awareness Month, 2023. Whereas, mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being, affects how people think, feel, and act, how they handle stress, make choices, and relate to others. Whereas, mental health allows people to maintain relationships, take care of themselves, their families, their physical bodies, and allows them to respond and adapt to daily life changes. Whereas, evidence-based mental and behavioral health training teaches adults how to recognize signs and symptoms of mental health and substance use, problems in youth, and provides adults with skills to use a five-step action plan to help youth who may be facing a mental health problem or crisis such as suicide. Whereas, a lack of mental health awareness leads to devastating impact on the well-being of individuals and society. Whereas, during Mental Health Awareness Month and throughout the year, St. Lucy Public Schools District is committed to ending stigmas around mental health and promoting solutions to the mental health struggles of its students. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucy County does hereby proclaim the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month.
At this time, I'd like to invite Jennifer Carey, a speech-language pathologist, to the podium for the Better Hearing and Speech Month proclamation.
Good evening, Chairman Ingersoll, School Board Members and Superintendent Dr. Prince. I'm Jennifer Carey, Program Specialist for Speech and Language, and this is Ryan Anexi, a former student of mine. I first met Ryan in 2011 when he entered Northport K A with an I E P for both Speech and Language Services. He struggled with speech and language deficits, struggled academically and behaviorally. After years of therapy, he earned scores within the average range and was dismissed from both Speech and Language Services prior to going to high school. Ryan graduated from Port St. Lucy High School in 2022 with a weighted GPA of 3.4. He is currently a student at I R S C and is pursuing a career as a corrections officer, and he will read tonight's proclamation for Better Hearing and Speech Month.
The School Board of St. Lucy County Proclamation, Better in Hearing and Speech Month, 2023. Whereas many people take communication for granted, however illness or injury may make speaking and hearing a challenge for many Americans. And whereas with impaired communication, speech and language and hearing disorders can limit academic achievement, social adjustment, career advancement, and whereas audiologists and speech and language pathologists are professionals who specialize in the identification and treatment of communication disorders, conditions that affect millions of Americans. And whereas each year during the month of May, audiologists and speech and language pathologists throughout the nation and make special effort to inform, educate, and raise public awareness of speech, language, and hearing impairments. And whereas more than 42 million people in America, one in 10 families, have hearing and speech or language impairments. And whereas most people with communicative disorders can be helped through medical and surgical treatment, hearing aids, and hearing and speech rehabilitation. And whereas with early diagnosis and proper treatment, most people with communication disorders can lead to full and productive lives. Therefore, be resolved that the School Board of St. Lucy County does hereby proclaim in the month of May, 2023, as Better in Hearing and Speech Month at St. Lucy Public Schools.
And I'm going to have Jennifer not go very far because she is our first star recipient for this evening. Jennifer Carey? Yes, sorry about that. Jennifer Carey was nominated by a group of speech-language pathologists. As she mentioned, she is the current and new Program Specialist for Speech and Language. She took over this overwhelming role and has led this group to amazing new heights. She's a strong advocate for the team and the students. She jumps in wherever needed and continues to work in the trenches, walks the walk. She helps to secure materials, training, and the support they need in order to do their jobs effectively. There is not a time of day that she is not there to support the team, answer questions, or just to provide a listening ear. They wanted everyone to know how much they appreciate all that she has done and will continue to do for them, as she knows this job does not go unnoticed. So, congratulations to our star recipient, Jennifer Carey. All right, congratulations. Next, we'd like to recognize Andrew Copeland, who was nominated by Principal Dr. Leslie from Village Green Environmental Studies. He writes, "He would like to recommend Coach Andrew for the STAR Award on behalf of the school. Having a large garden on campus takes a lot of concerted effort to maintain. Coach Copeland has taken upon himself to maintain the garden, label all of the plants for students and visitors, and ensures that the school has what they need to keep the garden growing. During the hurricane last fall, the garden experienced damage to the banana trees as well as other fruit-producing plants. Coach Copeland researched everything that was needed to rebuild the garden, submitted the purchase request, and oversaw the entire project from start to finish. He did all of this outside of his normal work hours, along with another part-time job. If you ask him why he's willing to do this, he says it's because of the children. He is committed to student learning and growth and is just one example of how dedicated he is to the students in St. Lucy schools." So, congratulations to Mr. Copeland.
I'm going to ask Ms. Holly to come to stand here, and she's going to say a few words for me.
Normally, I'm up there. It's kind of, I don't know, the view from here's not bad. Thank you, Chair Ingersoll, for allowing me this moment of pleasure. You know, the last two years, we've worked really hard on our St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council. We had a phenomenal chairperson the first year, and we have had a super phenomenal chairperson this year. She has led the organization and brought it to new heights, and I wanted to take this time to personally thank Tyler Daniel for all she's done. And all that I know she will continue to do as she goes and charts her path even further down the road. But she's promised to come back and see us, so. And I know Mom will keep, make sure that happens, so. We do have something for you, but it will come after tonight, so I'll get it to you probably at the meeting, okay? And I'd also like to ask Ms. DeMayo to come up. She has been from the get-go, the faculty and district advisor for this council. So come up, my friend, and, thank you. We've had many moments of joy working with this group for the last couple of years, and we look forward to the years to come. So, we're going to go get a picture.
One quick announcement? Columbia.
We love you, Miss Wild.
She said, "One of my favorite ones."
Thank you so much. It's so much fun. It's easy when there's so much. Thank you all. Yeah, they're part of my heart. Thank you very much.
All right. I'm going to record, I need a stool.
We're going to go ahead and move on to our ESOL report.
Good evening, Chairman Ingersoll, Board members, Superintendent Gent. Well, this is the time of the year. My apologies, Superintendent Prince.
David, I, I, I forgive you.
I think he's the only one that caught it.
I forgive you. I forgive you.
I'd start over, but it's probably best just to move on. This is the time of the year when we usually discuss the year and wrap things up and try and tie it up in a nice, pretty bow. And I want to start by talking about our school visits. You may or may not know, but the governor signed Senate Bill 265 today, which is an attack on teachers' voice and on our unions. I'm not going to rehash what I talked about at the last meeting, but we are continuing our, really our campaign to get our members switched over to E-dos, which is switching from payroll deduction to another system of them paying their dues so that we can continue the work that we do as their voice and as their union. I also want to review, whether it's my place or not, I'm going to review district leadership because we've had a year with Dr. Prince at the helm and Dr. Wild and the rest of the union leadership that's switched. And also with the board member visits that I do, and I, first of all, want to thank all of you for your patience. This has been a rough year for me. As you know, I've had some, it's not a big secret, HIP problems from years and years of sports and really just years and years of just, years and years of being me. It's just getting old there. So I do appreciate your patience. I've missed quite a few of those meetings, but they are actually very important to me as a leader in the union. So for those I've missed, I do apologize for that, and hopefully next year we can pick that up and make more of those meetings. I'm actually really happy to say that working with Dr. Prince and Dr. Wild and the rest of the leadership has been refreshing in many ways. I, as a leader, appreciate the fact that, A, when they say they're going to do something, I can trust that they're going to do that, whatever that is. I think that's important to have that trust, and that they are thoughtful about the things that I come to them with. It certainly doesn't mean that they're going to agree with everything I bring to them. In fact, if they did, I would be concerned that one of us was not doing our job. We look at things through a different lens, and that's necessary for the work that we do. But they, they do listen to what I bring to them or what Rebecca Petrie brings them, what the union brings them, whoever that is that brings it to them, and they are thoughtful in their responses. And that's important for the relationship that we have. And often, they work with us to solve whatever issues I bring to them. And again, it doesn't always go the way I would like it to go, and sometimes that requires that I take a stand that I may not want to take, or I'm sure the shoe is the same on the other foot for them. But a lot of times, things happen, that happened today where I had an issue, and that issue was solved, and I come to the meeting without the speech that I want to give, which means I don't give one of those rousing union leader speeches that we love to give so much, which is unfortunate, maybe, or fortunate, I'm not sure which. I guess fortunate because my, my goal is to solve the issues that my member have, not make some speech at a meeting. So I just want to, I want to say that after a year, I find that important for my members. It's not even about me or about Rebecca or about the relationship that we have. It's important that our members can count on district leadership, at least listening to the concerns that they have when we bring it to district leadership. So I think that's important. And it's not about the name that I call them, it's about the work that we do. So, Dr. Prince, I just want to say that that's appreciated. And Dr. Wild, and really any of the leadership, whether it's Dan Frank or whoever it is that we have to come to, I think, and that starts at the top and works its way down. So I think that's important. And I do want to say that that also comes from the board members who I speak to. It's a different kind of relationship, but I believe that you all listen to me when I come to you with a concern, and I think that's important. I think our members need to trust that their voices are heard. That's the role of a union, so. I also want to say that I appreciate, and our members appreciate and have shared that with us, the thoughtfulness of the book review process. I was unable to stay through the last meeting because of the aforementioned HIP issues, but I did watch it in video form, and the thoughtfulness of that is much appreciated compared to how some of our sister counties handle things. I want to leave it at that, but I will just say that it's appreciated by our members. Having said that, I do want to say this, and I hope it will be received in the manner in which I'm delivering it. As we look forward, I'm going to bring up an example. I'm not going to mention any particular schools, but we have a school where in the past, the school was run, the teachers were happy, the students were happy, and the community was happy with the way the school was run. There was very little turnover there. Teachers fought to get into that school. I spent very, very little time at that school, and actually, when I spent time there and there was discipline issue, it's one of the few schools I could walk away from where the member wasn't even upset with the discipline issue, which actually says a lot. It's rare that that happens. Consistently, the, the school grade was a solid B. Not an A, we don't like an A, but it was never a C, it was a solid B. Leadership changed at that school. Consistently, the students were unhappy this year, the teachers were unhappy. Right now, I have 20 or more teachers who are leaving. Hopefully, that'll change. The community's unhappy, I see that in the post. Hopefully, the test scores will be good, I honestly don't know. I, I don't say this to give anybody a black eye, again, I hope this is going to be received in the way that I'm, I'm giving it. We, we, we obviously have a system here that works. We can look at our grades, and we can look at the schools, we can look at the graduation rate. We have something here that works. So I want to be clear, what we have works, okay? But it works for all of our stakeholders. So the one thing I want to be cautious of, again, I'm just putting this out there, is do we, do we assure that it works for everybody? Do we, are we sure that we take students and teachers and community into that calculus when we figure it out? Okay? And I guess the question I want to be sure of, how do we measure potential loss when we make these decisions? Okay? And this isn't critical, saying we're doing anything wrong, this is, this is a thought exercise as we move forward, and I hope that it's accepted in that way. Okay? It's not a stick in the eye for anybody. We have something here that works. School grades show that, but it's just another side, this is a concern that I have when I look at things. Okay? That's all I want to say. I'm happy to, I'm happy to talk about this. Again, I will say this, and hopefully this has become clear over the years, this is not something I started. My predecessors, I think, felt this way. When the district has initiative that's good for students, that's good for our members, and is good for the community, we're here to help. That's our goal. When there's something that we feel isn't good for our members or isn't good for our students, we have to stand opposed. And I think, again, when we talk about leadership, one thing that we've become good at, at least I feel that way, is we don't take these things personally either. We have a job to do, the school district has a job to do, okay? But we really want to be partners where we can, and I think we've done that, but I just want to reiterate that as we end up this school year and get ready to start the next school year. Okay? So thank you, as always. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Freeland. CWA report? Seeing none. Youth Advisory Council, Ms. Daniels. I know Ms. DeMayo said what school you're going to, but could you say it in the microphone?
Columbia University.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening, School Board members, Chairman Ingersoll, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. This month's Youth Advisory Council report will be a bit different, as it will be the final time I have the opportunity to address you as the council's chair. As I stand before you, I am filled with gratitude and pride. It has been an honor to serve as the chair of this council this past school year, and I am proud of the progress we have made as a community. I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge our outstanding council members, especially our 11 graduating seniors. We have Breonna Thomas and Ridley LaRose from Fort Pierce Central High School, Shalane Lehends from Fort Pierce Westwood, Mackay Stapleton, Dominique Thomas, and Amanda Messina from Treasure Coast High School, Anna Gamboa and Amanda Ebanks from St. Lucie West, Centennial High School, Emma Morgan, our Communications Outreach Committee Chair from Mosaic Digital Academy, and Catherine Pinto and Anna Rose Hillhorst, our Council Secretary from Lincoln Park Academy. Further, thank you to our excellent faculty advisors, Ms. Carla Giometta, Mr. Daniel Wilks, Mr. Greg Austin, Ms. Lisa Embry, and Ms. Temara Lindo, and our principals and assistant principals for their unwavering support. Last but certainly not least, I want to thank Mrs. DeMayo and School Board Member Mrs. Holly for their continued efforts and involvement to ensure the advancement of the council. The council is grateful to the St. Lucie District and district personnel for allowing us to represent the 40,000 students within the St. Lucie Public Schools and for your willingness to encourage student voices and collaboration. Our last St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council meeting for the 2022-2023 school year will be held at this year's whole school, Lincoln Park Academy. This meeting will be both celebratory and work-focused as we close out the school year and plan for the possibilities in the upcoming years. Thank you.
Ms. Daniels? Who's been bringing you here? Can you introduce that person to me?
Yes.
Yes, would you please?
Yes, this is my mom.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you taking her and, and, and sharing her life with us. Thank you, Taylor, Mrs. Daniels, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
For all that you do, and I know it's been an unusual year for us, and I thank you for coming and, and representing the student voice. Thank you, Mrs. Holly, for organizing it. We couldn't ask for a better representation this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll.
All right, Board members, we're going to go ahead and get to business, the consent agenda. You've had the opportunity to look over it. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda? I got, I got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Mr. Superintendent, can you go ahead and give me your recommendation?
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Board members, is there anything you'd like to pull for separate voter discussion? Seeing none. We have a motion from, or the recommendation from the superintendent. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
I got a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Superintendent, can I get your report, please?
Okay, I got a lot. I got a loaded potato, so to speak, but I just wanted to, to, first of all, recognize David Freeland. Thank you for the apology. David sent me a quick text saying he messed up my name, but I did get a celebratory lap around the track from Mr. Gent because apparently he's watching. So, so with that being said, anyway, David, I wanted to publicly express my appreciation for you and our partnership, and not just our partnership, but our partnership with the, the union bodies you represent, not just you, but our other union leaders as well. Also, I just wanted to thank the board for the board retreat that we had. I want to appreciate your cooperation, and not just your cooperation, but your teamwork. I want to thank, I talked to every single board member for the most part in the last couple of days. I also wanted to thank Mrs. Richardson. Mrs. Richardson, you know, we had some questions with regards to the five-year plan, and I also wanted to publicly commit that I will keep my word and will meet just to have follow-ups around that. That is a living, breathing document, and I just wanted to make that commitment to you as well. I wanted to make a couple of just brief announcements. We've got graduations coming up. Someone said, it was a former superintendent I used to work for, but he said, "Public education is the genius of our democracy." And I, and I do truly believe that, but he also said that graduation was its crown jewel. And our graduation ceremonies right now, I mean, my favorite job, my second favorite job, was high school principal. And right now, the students are having their proms, they're having their celebrations, we've got our K8 students going.
Again, I will say this, and hopefully this has become clear over the years, this is not something I started. My predecessors, I think, felt this way. When the district has initiative that's good for students, that's good for our members and is good for the community, we're here to help. That's our goal. When there's something that we feel isn't good for our members or something good for our students, we have to stand opposed. And I think, again, when we talk about leadership, one thing that we've become good at, at least I feel that way, is we don't take these things personally either. We have a job to do. The school district has a job to do, okay? But we really want to be partners where we can. And I think we've done that, but I just want to reiterate that as we end up this school year and get ready to start the next school year. So thank you, as always. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Freeland. CWA report? Seeing none. Youth Advisory Council, Ms. Daniels. I know Ms. DeMayo said what school you're going to, but could you say it in the microphone?
Columbia University.
Congratulations.
Good evening, school board members, Chairman Ingersoll and Superintendent Dr. Prince. This month's Youth Advisory Council report will be a bit different, as it will be the final time I have the opportunity to address you as the council's chair. As I stand before you, I am filled with gratitude and pride. It has been an honor to serve as the chair of this council this past school year, and I am proud of the progress we have made as a community. I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge our outstanding council members, especially our 11 graduating seniors. We have Brianna Thomas and Rudley LaRose from Fort Pierce Central High School, Shalan Lahand from Fort Pierce Westwood, Mackay Sableton, Dominique Thomas and Amanda Messina from Treasure Coast High School, Anna Gumboa and Amanda Ebanks from St. Lucy West Centennial High School, Emma Morgan, our Communications Outreach Committee Chair from Mosaic Digital Academy, and Catherine Pinto and Anna Rose Hillhorse, our Council Secretary from Lincoln Park Academy. Further, thank you to our excellent faculty advisors, Ms. Carla Giacometta, Mr. Daniel Wilks, Mr. Greg Austin, Ms. Lisa Embry and Ms. Tamara Lindo, and our principals and assistant principals for their unwavering support. Last, but certainly not least, I want to thank Mrs. DeMayo and school board member Mrs. Holly for their continued efforts and involvement to ensure the advancement of the council. The council is grateful to the St. Lucy District and district personnel for allowing us to represent the 40,000 students within the St. Lucy Public Schools and for your willingness to encourage student voices and collaboration. Our last St. Lucy Public Schools Youth Advisory Council meeting for the 2022-2023 school year will be held at this year's whole school, Lincoln Park Academy. This meeting will be both celebratory and work focused as we close out the school year and plan for the possibilities in the upcoming years. Thank you.
Ms. Daniels? Who's been bringing you here? Can you introduce that person to me?
Oh, yes.
Yes, would you please?
Yes, this is my mom.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you taking her and, and, and sharing her life with us. Thank you, Taylor, Mrs. Daniels, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
For all that you do. And I know it's been an unusual year for us and I thank you for coming and, and representing the student voice. Thank you, Mrs. Holly, for organizing it. We couldn't ask for a better representation this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll.
All right, board members, we're going to go ahead and get to business, the consent agenda. You've had the opportunity to look over it. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda? I got, I got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Mr. Superintendent, can you go ahead and give me your recommendation?
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Board members, is there anything you'd like to pull for separate voter discussion? Seeing none. We have a motion from, or the recommendation from the superintendent, can I get a motion?
So moved.
I got a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Superintendent, can I get your report, please?
Okay, I got a lot. I got a loaded potato, so to speak. But I just wanted to, to, first of all, recognize David Freeland. Thank you for the apology to, David sent me a quick text saying he messed up my name, but I did get a celebratory lap around the track from Mr. Gent, because apparently he's watching. So with that being said, anyway, David, I wanted to publicly express my appreciation for you and our partnership, and not just our partnership, but our partnership with the, the union bodies you represent, not just you, but our other union leaders as well. Also, I just wanted to thank the board for the board retreat that we had. I want to appreciate your cooperation, and not just your cooperation, but your teamwork. I want to thank, I talked to every single board member for the most part in the last couple of days. I also wanted to thank Mrs. Richardson. Mrs. Richardson, you know, we had some questions with regards to the five-year plan. And I also wanted to publicly commit that I will keep my word and we'll meet just to have follow-ups around that. That is a living, breathing document. And I just wanted to make that commitment to you as well. I wanted to make a couple of just brief announcements. We've got graduations coming up. Someone said, it was a former superintendent I used to work for, but he said, "Public education is the genius of our democracy." And I, and I do truly believe that. But he also said that graduation was its crown jewel. And our graduation ceremonies right now, I mean, my favorite job, my second favorite job was high school principal. And right now, the students are having their proms, they're having their celebrations. We've got our K8 students going to their own, sometimes their little eighth grade graduation bashes. We've got kindergarten graduations. We've got all kinds of celebrations in our schools. And, and time is so fleeting for our parents, you don't realize it when you're in it, but you blink your eyes and your kid is 18 years old and graduating. And it, it happens in a, in a, in an instant. So I wanted to remind our, the public, our graduations are literally on our website. May 23rd, we've got Treasure Coast High School at 8:00 AM, Port St. Lucie High School at 11:00 AM. The next day, May 24th, we've got Fort Pierce Central High School at 8:00 AM, Lincoln Park at 11 o'clock. And then May 25th, we've got St. Lucie West Centennial at 8:00 AM, and then Fort Pierce Westwood Academy at 11:00. We are counting on, and we are praying for, no rain. But we do have a plan in place. If we do have rain, we will make adjustments. And we want to focus on, you know, number one, if folks are in town, we'll do it later that day. And if we can't do that, then we'll do it on the Friday. Just wanted a couple of Scholar-Athlete Awards were last Monday. These are students that had to have a 3.3 GPA and play two varsity sports. So I want to recognize a couple of students. Delaney Bolback and Chris, or Charlie Passanante III at Fort Pierce Westwood, Anna Barnhart and Cornelius Wilson, LPA, Jaclyn Dyer and Kyle Gray, PSL High School, Haley Bakare and Carlos Abreu, and at Treasure Coast High School, Sarah Reichardt, and then St. Lucie West Centennial High School, Kay Ursom. I wanted to recognize, I had some board members that were with me. Mr. Ingersoll, Dr. Mills and Mrs. Richardson were at the Law Day Reception and Art Contest. And we had some winners at that as well this week, or last week. K2 was first, first place Symphony A Renee from Bay Shore. Second place was Mason Murphy from Palm, Palm Point. Third place with Anthony Coppola from Palm Point, grades through three through five. First place was Zoe Outlaw, Palm Point. Second place Camilla Rodriguez, Palm Point. Third, third place Emily Maxwell, Palm Point. Palm Point racked it up, that, that particular event. But six through eight, we had a first place winner with Chloe King from LPA. Second place with Cast. And then third place was Lucy Cook. Couple of un, upcoming events I just wanted to mention, other than graduations. Well, we've got a Florida Power and Light Check presentation for the next extra STEM Classroom Makeover Grant. That's at 7:40 AM at Lakewood Park. I know the board members were invited, that is a big deal. They're getting a significant check from, from FPNL. And then Thursday, I will be hosting the St. Lucy Leadership Class Number 40, and I will be doing a presentation for them at 3:15 in the afternoon. And they will get a tour of our building and they will have a Q and A with me. And once again, I just wanted to say, last but not least, Dominic Thomas. We had an International Science Fair winner last year, but this year, our representative for the International Science Fair is Dominique Thomas from Treasure Coast High School. That is literally May 13th. Hopefully she comes home successful. I want to wish her the, the best of luck. And lastly, Taylor, congratulations for your leadership. Thank you for your leadership with your student group. I'm so impressed. You know, we are so proud to send you off to Columbia, like I had something to do with it. But all I can tell you is whenever we have a graduate that goes off and does great things, we feel good about it. So I want to wish you the best congratulation in the world. So with that being said, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Attorneys report?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent. There is no attorney's report.
Yes, ma'am. School board members report, Mrs. Richardson?
Thank you, Chairman Ingersoll. So my report starts tonight with a notable visit to Francis K. Sweet. I received an invitation from Camilla. So thank you, Camilla, for that beautiful invitation. The board was invited to their therapeutic botanical gardens groundbreaking ceremony. They had a few dignitaries, including our superintendent. The entire school showed out for the groundbreaking event. It was spearheaded by Dr. Barbara Bennett, and it was a lot of fun. I want to thank the store manager from Home Depot, Sean Moran and his staff, Francine, Karen, Uriana, Gwyneth, Madeline, Kathleen, Carlos, Natalie and Ben. These men and women volunteered on their day off to come and give back to the community, in particular FK Sweet. A big thank you to Home Depot. Dr. Bennett, I'd like to thank her for having the vision, and Principal Jackson for making this happen. I also had an opportunity to visit Seymour. While I was there, I was shown a video of a dance featuring Principal Dr. Jackson, AP Bergren and AP Brahms. And this dance was choreographed by no other than Beyoncé. I thought they did an awesome job. And enough to be, I think, backup dancers for Beyoncé. The students joined in and they were having a great time and lots and lots of exercise. I was told that they had a dance party for the students before testing. This they all did before testing. And, and everyone participating, including our SROs, everybody had a chance to do their thing. I'm hoping that they did post it on Facebook like they said, so we can go and see and like their, that page. There are some great things happening at Seymour, and it is my expectation that we will be hearing about great community leaders being born at Seymour, coming out of Seymour. I popped in at Dan McCarty to see the improvements to the gym. And to say that I was impressed is an understatement. There are great things happening at Dan McCarty as well. Encouraging our parents, our community, to visit the school, our community partners and celebrate these improvements. A motivational speaker once told me that if I close my eyes and I open it, I should not be able to tell which school I'm in. They shall all look the same. And I'm happy to report today that we are heading in that direction with Dan McCarty. I'm going to use one of Dr. Mills's famous saying. She says, "We have come a long way, we are going a long way, we are progressing," you know? So we have come a long way, we are going a long way. I want to thank the superintendent. I'd like to thank Mr. O'Leary, Mr. McSween, and their respective team for doing a great job. I would also like, like to thank our maintenance team and at each school for the spectacular job they are doing on the front line. The schools that I have visited are looking like we are a district of excellence. So thank you. Now, our executive director, Ms. Monterey Buchanan, has not won, but two graduates this year. Ms. Buchanan, can you wave to us? Thank you. Alex, who is a graduate of Centennial High School, will be graduating from the University of Miami on Friday. He had a special request, and that was to have his high school principal, Ms. Popwell, to attend his graduation at UAM. Wow. Ashley will be graduating from Fort Pierce Central High School. Ashley has earned the honor of being the class of 2023 salutatorian for Fort Pierce Central High School. A well-earned honor. Exactly. Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Buchanan, congratulations to you and your family. I know you are a very proud mama. I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate the class of 2023 graduates. You will be graduating two weeks from today. Nothing like walking across the stage to receive your diploma. To our proud parents, grandparents, guardians, all our educators, mentors, congratulations. You have made this milestone possible with all of your support. In closing, June 1st is the last day of school for our students, and June 2nd for our teachers and education. I wish for you a safe, healthy and most enjoyable vacation. Thank you.
Just looking forward to the Sound of Music at Port St. Lucie High School. It's, it's just like Broadway, only better, it's more fun. And that's only if we can still get tickets. So I'll, I'll fast, other than that, I have no report. Thank you.
Dr. Mills?
I just want to reemphasize for the congratulations to the Boys and Girls Club, Ms. Mia, who is the Youth of the Year 2023. Ms. Mia, we're very proud of you for not only being our state Youth of the Year, but two years in a row. Thank you Kiwanis Club for your presentations this evening that honored our display winners of our different schools at the fair and also the Martin Luther King Parade and Week of Kindness winners. Congratulations to you guys as well. Dr. Sam Gaines essay winners, we reemphasize congratulations to you. And as we all learned today, this evening, this is mental health awareness and also the Better Speech and Hearing Proclamation was read today. And this is the month that we recognize these very valuable programs and operations. Also want to remember to say thank you to all of our STAR Awards. I really enjoyed having Officer Frank Sabo be on it tonight for school security. We certainly do need our officers within our schools. And Jennifer Curry, as well as Andrew Copeland, thank you for your service and your work as well. And last but not least, Tyler Daniels. Thank you for what you did this year. You, you represented extremely well our Youth Advisory Committee, and we're very proud of your accomplishments. Just keep moving forward. I got a chance to meet your sister the other evening at the Education Foundation Awards. And she, you've got a real trooper behind you. As I spoke with her, she's, she's in your shadows, but she's going to bloom as well, I could tell. And Mom, if it wasn't for you, these girls would not be here today. So we want to honor and thank you. This is Mother's Day month in May as well, and we honor you as a mom and what you've done to produce these young ladies that you've produced. And at that, I've completed my report.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Going back to Mr. Kelly and Mr. Madden called me the night they opened up the ticket sales and they sold 917. And then that weekend, they sold 200, 2,300. So there's not many, I mean, there's, I think there's like a thousand or a couple of, there's not many tickets left. So if you want to see Sound of Music, you really need to go pick up your tickets. The kids are sounding great, too.
So you don't have my tickets then?
No, unfortunately, I can't make this one. I'm out of town, so I apologize, Mr. Kelly. But man, I was going to say something. Got me good. Speechless. Oh, we also voted on Odyssey of the Mind. Windmill Point and another school is going too for World and, oh, Morningside, that's right. And believe it or not, I was in regionals in Orlando and I watched both of them perform. I was pretty lucky and they're going to do a good job going on. I really don't have a report except just have a great summer before, I think this is our last, or last meeting beforehand. But we do need to vote, board members. I missed item number 20.1. Can I get a recommendation from the board? Because this is about our travel expense. Can I get a motion?
So moved. That we approve?
I got a motion, I got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. As opposed, motion carries, 5-0. All righty. Thank you so much. At this time, board members, this meeting is adjourned.